Good evening, and so we begin the special session meeting for January 23rd of the Yountville Zoning and Design Review Board. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, I'll do the roll. Chair Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair Hanson.
Here.
Member Cook.
Here.
Members Gorsuch.
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. Will you join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So can we have a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Excellent, thank you.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm assuming there's no other items on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a presentation?
We have a, Chair Miller, we do have a presentation for the item.
Okay.
And we will receive that once you call that item to order.
Okay. I don't have our agenda in front of us or in front of me. Hold on, give me one second.
Not any minutes. What else are we missing? Public comment?
I'll let the board know we did not receive any public comments.
Excellent.
In general or on the item on your agenda tonight.
Okay, so then we can move to the presentation, right?
Is there something else in between?
We don't have copies of the agenda.
Oh, you don't?
No.
My apologies. So there is a section on the agenda, presentations. These are presentations not related to an item on the agenda. We do not have any of those. Your next item is public hearings, which is consideration of recommendations to the town council on adoption of a resolution to approve an amendment to the town's general plan to adopt the sixth cycle housing element. If you're ready to proceed, Chair Miller, I will go ahead and invite Nicole West from the consulting firm of Placeworks to give the board a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
It's nice to be here with you in person. I have met some of you over Zoom, so this is really great to be here today in person. And I think you can for introducing the topic. We can proceed. Okay, so I'll just go over the big picture of what my presentation is going to discuss today. I'll do a brief housing element overview as a refresher for those of you who have been on this journey and to introduce it to anyone who is new to this. We'll talk about the regional housing needs allocation, which is referred to as RENA, and the sites inventory capacity to meet that RENA. I'll talk about the assessment of fair housing. And then we will discuss, HCD is the Housing and Community Development Department at the state level, and they have provided their review of the initial draft and gave us feedback, asked a lot of questions. So I'll talk about those and talk about the changes that we made to the document in response to their comments. And then we'll go through the schedule, where we've been, where we are, and go to that recommendation for adoption, and we'll have time for questions and answers. Okay, so as an overview, this is one of the mandated general plan elements. It's heavily regulated by state law, and it has to be reviewed and certified by HCD. They do set the schedule, so we know the fifth cycle, which is your current element, is expiring essentially at the end of this month. And then the sixth cycle, which has an eight-year timeframe, and it is starting up then at the end of this month. The due date for the housing element is January 31st, and that does mean a certified and adopted housing element. However, you are really close to getting there, and so I think it'll be okay. And if you have any questions about that, we can discuss later. Okay, so the contents of the housing element, it is heavily regulated. There's a big component of it that is the needs assessment, which identifies the different needs in the community for housing. We rely on demographic information, so that's the quantitative. We also rely on qualitative information. We do a lot of public outreach and talk to community members and to you about the needs of the community. We did stakeholder interviews with service providers because they really have their finger on the pulse of the needs of certain groups, like those with disabilities. Then there's the assessment of fair housing, which also identifies housing needs and other related needs. We have a whole chapter on constraints, which includes governmental constraints, so that's a full evaluation of everything in the zoning code as related to residential development and what the town's procedures are, and go through looking at any potential barriers to housing development or access, and then propose solutions and ways to overcome those barriers. And then the constraints also talks about environmental constraints, so we look for hazards or other environmental conditions that could be a barrier to housing, and make sure that there's infrastructure, water, and sewer. So this is the template that all jurisdictions have to look at. We also look at market trends, so incomes and affordability, construction costs, all the things that go into the cost of housing. And then there's a whole chapter on resources and sites, and so those are the physical resources, meaning land available for housing, as well as administrative and financial resources. We look at the zoning in all the different zones and what densities are allowed, and we do an inventory of available sites to meet the needs of the RENA. We also look at anticipated accessory dwelling unit production and mobile homes, and those are existing and potential. And then there's a whole section on policies and programs. So from the fifth cycle, we look at your programs and look at your annual progress reports and provide a summary of all of the progress that has been made towards meeting those programs, and then identify which ones should be continued and then what new ones are needed based on new laws since the fifth cycle. Okay, let's talk about the RENA. So the state sets this large number of housing units that are needed over the next eight years statewide, and it's based on a lot of different factors, like where existing jobs are, where jobs are projected to be, where there's transportation, and they really want to reduce sprawl, basically, and so they're trying to put, that's why a lot of these jurisdictions that are already built out, they're saying, why are you giving us such a huge RENA? Well, that's where the jobs are, and that's where transportation is, that's where infrastructure and amenities are. But if you look there, Yountville's in particular is the column RENA. Those are the numbers that trickled down from the state to the ABAG region, Association of Bay Area Governments. All the COGS then distribute to their individual towns, cities, and counties what the numbers are. And those numbers are broken up by income category to make sure that we're considering the needs of households at all different incomes. So you can see that the area median income for a four-person household last year was just under $120,000, so making sure that there's homes that are affordable for the lower-income category as well. So the way that the town is able to meet its RENA involves a series of sites as well as anticipated ADUs, and those are not tied to any particular sites. Those can be developed throughout the town, and then you've got a total capacity and a surplus in your lower and your moderate categories. So these are the sites, and in particular, the ones that will come up again in this presentation are numbers one and two, because those are the ones that are showing capacity to meet the lower-income RENA. And so number one is the French Laundry Garden site, and then number two is the church site, and we'll talk about those a little bit more later. Okay, let's talk about the assessment of fair housing, which is a brand-new requirement this cycle, and it is all about affirmatively furthering fair housing. And so first, we do a very thorough analysis to look at where there are patterns of integration and segregation. So are there concentrations of people with disabilities that are all in one part of the town? Is there a concentration of certain racial groups or income groups? And then we also look at access to opportunities. Is there access to transit throughout the town, especially to where people with lower incomes might be? Are there job opportunities accessible? And a whole suite of other factors. It's a very long technical chapter in the housing element, and it really informs the action steps that come out of this, which are in the programs. So let's talk about the next slide a little bit. Opportunity areas is something that TCAC and HCD have mapped these statewide. TCAC is the Tax Credit Allocation Committee, and they allocate funding for affordable housing, and HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So they've taken all this demographic data and other data and made a composite score related to access to resources and other healthy economic, social, environmental indicators, and so they have these categories. And this is mapped at the state level, and so it's, we also rely on local knowledge and make sure that we're talking to our communities and see whether this rings true or not, or, you know, how prevalent these patterns are. But it's been categorized, you can see the town has a high resource area north of Fennell Road and west of Washington Street, and then a low resource area south of Fennell Road and east of Washington Street. And so from a big-picture perspective, part of affirmatively furthering fair housing is looking at how to encourage housing mobility and choice. How easily could a household move into the neighborhood of their choice, and what can we do to facilitate that? So for example, in the high resource area, strategies could be encouraging accessory dwelling unit construction, because that's a way of providing some affordable housing and bringing some lower-income households into a high resource area, or encouraging acceptance of the housing choice vouchers in that high resource area. And then in the low resource area, improving those neighborhoods, like the rehabilitation programs are targeted more in those neighborhoods, and other place-based revitalization approaches would be targeted more towards the lower resource area. Okay, so we'll go through HCD's review comments and what changes were made in response. So they wanted clarification and additional analysis when it came to the suitability of the non-vacant sites, so those would be the site one and two. Even though the church site only has vineyards in HCD's mind, that still indicates that it's not vacant, and so that one is considered a non-vacant site. And then the French Laundry site, they have a couple of homes on the site, which our understanding is they use them as temporary housing, they're not permanent housing, but there's also room on the site for additional development. So I'll get more into those two in a minute. But clarification and additional analysis that was requested, the cumulative impacts of land use controls, this is a comment we're getting for all of our jurisdictions now. That's one of the newer ones in the sixth cycle, where they want us to demonstrate that the maximum allowable densities actually could be achieved in each zone, and go through and show the math on that. The HCD was asking for more clarification, in particular with the processing and permit procedures and the design review, and then they wanted us to call out more explicitly all of the different resources that are available to meet the needs of extremely low-income households and identify gaps in those resources. Some of the other things that HCD was asking for, they wanted programs strengthened pretty much all throughout. They were just asking for some stronger language to make those affirmatively furthering fair housing goals even more apparent, and to add stronger metrics and milestones and the geographic targeting, meaning like where in the town are these things really needed the most, and how is the town going to market the availability of programs and services? And I'll get more into details, too, when we'll talk about the programs that were modified. Yeah, let's go, go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, they wanted more information about those two sites, and so we added information about the current uses on the French Laundry Garden site, and clarification that there is a requirement to build off-site housing if that site is developed as an inn, and that wasn't clear to the reviewers on the first draft, so we made that more clear. And then with the church site clarified, what portion of it is developable, and that it's not environmentally constrained, and that it does have access to infrastructure. So HCD wanted some strengthened commitments related to those two sites, as far as making sure that the town is reaching out to the owners and offering incentives for affordable housing and just being proactive about getting those, housing on those sites. And then also that off-site development, if it is required, that the town will facilitate as needed. For example, if the off-site housing is going to be built on a site that needs to be rezoned to allow the density sufficient to meet that requirement, that the town will facilitate that. All right, so then we went ahead and responded to their request for more resources called out, even regional resources. So we pulled from Napa County and all different resources and listed them there, all the available funding for all these programs, so that's now in the document. And then we went ahead and revised that whole section on processing and permit procedures to make sure that it was clear and correct, and added details on the major and minor design review, objective and subjective design standards. Okay, so here's all of the nitty-gritty of how the programs changed. The affordable housing overlay zone, and there was a mistake made, I apologize for that, we'll get it fixed, but Hopper Creek Apartments is the residential development that should have been listed there, where HCD just wanted to see what other properties were in that affordable housing overlay, even though they've already been developed, they just wanted them called out explicitly. And then accessory dwelling unit program, we added some more information there about your new anticipated PHLA funds, and just a stronger commitment about making sure that the ordinance is always in step with state law. New affordable housing opportunities, HCD wanted a little bit more attention paid to farmworker housing needs and the needs of people with disabilities, and so just calling that out, that those would be target groups for new affordable housing. And then increasing access to affordable housing programs, again, like I was saying, it's one of the ways to affirmatively further fair housing is getting that housing choice voucher acceptance in higher resource areas. All right, so then programs on preserving affordable units, and those were modified to include reference to protecting residents from displacement, kind of a lot of the fair housing buzzwords that they're really looking for to infuse the programs to make it clear what the goals are. Program 17, replacement units, made it clear that the program is applicable to the two existing units on the French Laundry Garden site if those two are demolished while the site is developed. The rehabilitation and home repair programs, they wanted to make sure that the program is actively marketed to low-income households, so they asked us to specifically call out the mobile home parks as target groups for marketing the availability of those programs. The special housing needs program was expanded in a few different ways. HCD wanted to make sure that if there are additional languages that are used in the town, that people, if they need the materials in that language, that they have access to that. The Yount Mill Vineyards is not within the town boundaries, but HCD thought that would be a really good opportunity, being so nearby, to promote programs to farmworkers who are there. And then they were interested in seeing what the town could do as far as placemaking improvements in the public realm to assist mobility and access for persons with disabilities. So that was a new program action that was added, and it's kind of open-ended and left up to you to look at in the next eight years and see what opportunities there are to improve accessibility and mobility. And then there also, because one of the local special housing needs groups are employees of local businesses, so HCD asked us to have a little more language in Program 21 about outreach to business owners regarding funding for worker housing options. Okay, Program 22, Planning Regulations Amendments, it's a whole suite of little tweaks to the planning regulations to bring them in line with state law. So there were just a few things that HCD called out for us to make sure that we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is with that one. And then they also requested a new action item related to area pollutants, so there's a lot of agriculture around Yountville and potential pollutants then that are in the water and the air. So HCD was encouraging the town to collaborate with Napa County and with neighbors to look for ways to mitigate that, as well as any airborne pollutants from state Route 29. So let's talk a little bit about where we've been, where we're going. We're almost done. We're at the tail end here. We kicked off a little over a year ago. We had a lot of outreach from January to July of last year, and then even though that was the most focused time of outreach, of course, we've still accepted public comment and made announcements when new drafts were available and all of that. We had a presentation, a joint meeting with the ZDRB and Town Council to launch the public review draft. HCD did their initial review, they took their 90 days, and then they had a call with us to talk about their questions and comments, and we had the opportunity to release a revised draft that addressed a lot of those comments, thereby keeping them out of the letter that we got on November 18th. And then we addressed, we think that we've addressed everything in the letter, and so we released another draft to the public on the 13th of this month, and we're here tonight at the adoption hearing, and then the Town Council adoption hearing on February 7th. After that, what we do is make any corrections, like that Hopper Creek Apartments reference and any other tweaks that are needed, we'll make those little tweaks, and we'll submit the adopted housing element to HCD for their certification review. They have up to 60 days to make a determination, but we will contact them in the middle of that and ask them how it's going, ask them if they need anything. If there's any little minor clarifications, then we can make those to do what we need to do to get certification. If there, I don't anticipate there will be anything major, but we will circle back with you if there is, but I don't think that's going to be the case. So we're here today to request that you recommend to the Town Council that they adopt the housing element and authorize staff to submit the draft to HCD for certification review. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you for that, and it's very helpful. Are there any questions from anyone up here?
Just a little clarification, they decided the high resource area and low resource area, and does that have any overall implications to the town itself? And what, what did they mean by that, and how did they decide that?
There is a whole methodology published online, and it is a composite of a lot of data that they look at from the state level, and so it doesn't have that fine-grained, you know, ground-truth thing, like in other communities where they've looked at it and said, oh, well, you consider that a low resource area, but actually that's the cemetery, so there isn't, there aren't programs we're going to do there, or, you know, it's a kind of a coarse way of categorizing communities, and so take it with a grain of salt. It doesn't have, like, implications, like legal implications. It's a way of guiding the programs and just targeting where there's certain programs could benefit certain areas, and other programs could be helpful in other areas. And so yes, it is data that's compiled on the state level, and they update it every year. There's a website that I can make sure gets circulated out to everybody where that information, they have a really cool GIS viewer where you can look at the map, and you can sort and filter by all their different categories, and look at all the criteria each year when it's updated, as well as the chapter in your housing element. But they have a methodology document. It's good if you need something to fall asleep at night, right?
I mean, the town is so small, everybody has access to all the resources of the town. So I'm not really sure what they're splitting.
Exactly. It's a method that has to work as well as possible for every community across the state, and so it's not going to be, maybe won't characterize some communities as well as it could characterize other communities. And the other thing is, it compares, the way that it comes up with, like, what's high and what's low, what's being compared to what? Like, we're working right now with Fresno area jurisdictions, and they, HCD and TCAC changed their methodology. So the fair housing, this fair housing opportunity areas, the set that came out last year, actually differs very much from the set that came out this year, because the relative high and low ratings, instead of comparing, I don't know exactly what it was, but it was like, instead of comparing the small cities to the big cities, they broke it up regionally, they just broke it up in different ways that then it spits out a different thing. So take it with a grain of salt, you know, it's a kind of a guide, it's maybe like a funhouse mirror, and you can look at it, and it's not a perfect mirror, but it's, it gives you some information to think about and then to ground-truth it, and, you know, that's why we do the consultations with service providers and make sure to do that outreach and talk to people and say, is this accurate? It's a starting point, I think.
It won't have any long-term ramifications of calling out this is high or that as well?
Well, it's new, and so I don't know, I don't know exactly what they're going to do with it moving forward. I know they're going to update the data every year, and I know they're requiring jurisdictions to use it in their analysis, and then to have that, the results of the analysis inform the programs.
I had a question about anticipated ADUs. How do they come up with that? Is it a similar?
Yes, so ABAG actually, it was very helpful. ABAG came up with a methodology, because it's not only about assessing how many ADUs town-wide we think are going to be produced, but also what income categories do we count them for? So the way that we determine how many total was based on the building permits for ADUs in the last several years, and so there was a formula that that went into, and then ABAG did an affordability calculator study, and so they had a recommendation for how many to count in each of the income categories.
And it probably factors in the permissive, permissiveness of the latest set of laws regarding ADUs.
It's true, there's a multiplier, so we don't just look at, oh, here's what's been done in the last five years, we, we're not just assuming the same amount, there's a multiplier on it.
Okay.
The, right at the beginning, there was some mention of FAR and lot size?
The cumulative impacts of, yes.
Are we still able to maintain our minimum and maximum lot sizes with their changes?
So we, we looked at different hypothetical development scenarios in all of your zones, and maximum densities were able to be achieved on the hypothetical lots that we chose, so we haven't gotten HCD's feedback yet, of course, on this new piece of analysis, but I think that it's going to be sufficient for what they're looking for to be able to, for them to say, okay, the standards are not an impediment to developing residential.
So those standards still exist on our end, that we have a maximum lot size and things like that? That hasn't changed?
Yes, I mean, any changes to your development standards, yes, you'd have to go through your regular process, and we didn't make any new program edits specifying any changes to those requirements.
Okay.
And does your consultancy look at some of those factors and the methodology of their findings and rebut them or take them into account when you're making your recommendations? Is that?
If I understand your question correctly, I think it's assuming that HCD is also doing these calculations.
Right.
They are not. They're saying to us, you have to show us how maximum densities can be achieved in each zone. They're not going to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I may, Chair Miller and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole, Placeworks does know, you know, what HCD looks for, and, you know, through their work in other communities and through comment letters, they get to look at working for those communities. So I believe, Nicole, you know, when Placework is responding to, you know, these development standards questions, or really any other area of questions, they have a sense of, you know, what HCD is looking at, and can tailor, you know, their responses best they can to what they understand to be HCD's interest, if that, if that's helpful.
And the sites in the inventory, especially sites one and two, where they're being used to evidence capacity for lower-income housing, those are not anywhere near the minimum lot sizes, and so that wouldn't be something that HCD, I don't think, would push hard in that direction as far as making sure that the absolute smallest lot in the town could still achieve maximum densities, although- Although, you know, we, from our analysis, we think it can, but those two sites are much larger than that, and so I don't think it's going to be a sticking point.
And we can still use our FAR numbers?
We haven't received HCD's feedback on the new analysis, but it was interesting doing that new analysis and looking at, actually, when you get into the fine-grained detail, in some cases, it's the building envelope that's more constraining than FAR, and in some cases, the FAR is more constraining. But regardless, maximum densities were achievable, so.
Okay. Quickly, on page, just before I start with a question, this, page two of the staff report, under the analysis section, there is the one, the proposed amendments would further the goals, objectives, policies. Did you catch that?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it got, it got changed before the...
Yes, it's ZDRB. I did inadvertently admit a finding that the proposed amendments will not conflict with any goals.
No, not conflict, okay. Just didn't want that on the record.
But in the actual language, it says will conflict, so we will correct that.
Okay.
And the intention and our finding was that they do not conflict, but a good catch.
No, I just, I was like, wait, will it? So to me, it feels like, and, you know, from my understanding of housing elements and HCD's role, there are very, I'll just say very few, there are very few places in housing element where a local jurisdiction would have a lot of discretion. So the housing element, and that's the comments that we got back from HCD prove that, really, that there's very specific things that we just really don't have any control over. So I think where it might be helpful for perhaps Town Council is if there is an easy way to distinctly and clearly point to those areas where a local jurisdiction would have some sort of discretion and where we kind of just don't. Because I know that that's been one of the conversations, is what, you know, are some things being taken away, and how come we can't? But this is a very, this is a totally different animal than a general plan that has a lot of that local thumbprint on it. You know, you kind of work with a boilerplate, and then you, there are certain things that we just can't change, no matter how much we want to. But the other thing I got from it, and your memorandum was really good because it did help bring the red line and everything into a narrative that was easier to process. So we still do have discretion in some areas that's related to our own jurisdiction zoning and all of the ordinances. And it's not that we can't have those any longer, it is that we just have to describe how those might be in the way, or be a barrier, or they can be mitigated so as not to stand in the way of building the kind of housing that the state expects us to build for all levels and in those particular areas that we've identified.
You hit the nail on the head.
Okay. Is that what just, yeah?
And it's hard with being built out, and you would have a lot more discretion if, say, you had tons of vacant sites. You could say, we want to develop this one and not that one, but it's tricky.
Yeah. So thank you for that. I mean, I just, again, your memo, the memo was really helpful, as was the staff report, putting all of the red line into a narrative and really making it tailored to our community, but also understanding there's just some things that are completely out of our hands.
I would add, I was just going to build on the point. The, I would add to that, in the document, I mean, there's, because there's the policies that the state puts out, and they want to be sort of even, so every town or city gets it. But then there's obviously accommodation. So I, one of the things I appreciate on that note is just a lot of the language around the Veterans Home property, that, I mean, the, I think what the state is looking for is for various municipalities to come back and say, okay, here's how we're working with you to make it happen, versus like handing back the bare minimum or being sort of passively accommodating. So I've gotten a sense that we're coming across as, yes, we want to do our part within the boundaries of what we can support. And hopefully, a lot of the language here saying, we will, you know, we will meet, we're actually very fortunate to be able to meet the requirements of the housing element with the growth expected, considering that the population of town is inclusive of the Veterans Home, but not the land of the Veterans Home, that the language is there. That's, I think, the language here is really clear. So, yeah, hopefully, the point being that we're going to continue to work with the Veterans Home so that by the time the next housing element comes around, we've unlocked so much, you know, potential there in terms of the, you know, vacant and available land. So hopefully, the language that we're using, the communications is like, hey, we're sort of working with you, doing everything we can. I love the idea of doing, say, more marketing around the vacant sites and saying, and letting the owners know that there are benefits and bonuses to developing low-income housing on those sites. I mean, those types of things, hopefully, they see as, okay, Yountville's doing what they can, and they're not the problem, and there may be some more, I'll call it minimally compliant municipalities out there that need more attention.
Yeah, you're in good shape.
Yes, what's that?
No, you're in great shape. They definitely understand that you are committed to doing what you can to meet their requirements and working with the resources that you have. You're not on the naughty list, not at all. Not at all.
You mentioned that on the church site, that they see the vineyard that's planted there as making it...
Non-vacant.
Non-vacant. How do they factor in other properties that perhaps are not built out as efficiently as they could be, but are also not vacant?
Right. And those can be great sites for development, and so we would call those underutilized. And they are used for, to meet the RENA, and a lot of communities across the state are using underutilized sites. And the underutilized nature of the site could mean there's an old dilapidated building that should be torn down and the site redeveloped. Or, like you said, it could mean that a portion of the site could offer great development opportunities, and you can leave the other parts of the site, which is important in a lot of communities where they're concerned about their commercial businesses, and they don't want to see all of their tax base destroyed for housing. And so if they do have some sites where maybe they have excessive surface parking and they can build housing on part of the site, that's definitely a strategy a lot of cities are employing.
And that doesn't really seem to be any part of the recommendations that we've included, or the, sorry, not recommendations, but the ways that we're exhibiting our ability to fulfill the RENA advisory of 72 units.
And I'm working with the sites that were given to me by staff, and so we've moved forward with the ones that staff told me are the most viable.
Okay.
So if you have any of those other ones, keep them in your pocket for the seventh cycle.
Okay.
I would just add to that, and Nicole, again, jump in here if I'm, in addition to underutilized, there's also sites that may be constrained for various reasons. Maybe they're subject to flooding, or have, you know, some known sensitivity, maybe environmental sensitivity or species sensitivity. I don't know if that's the case exactly here, but the point is, you know, what may look like a potential, potentially developable area may not be for, you know, reasons not obvious to the eye. And I would imagine in Yountville, you know, just getting to know your community, you know, there's probably not a large inventory of underutilized sites. There are certainly some, and, you know, I think through the participation of, you know, historic housing elements, where we've looked at our sites, our planning staff, our town manager, who's, you know, very familiar with these sites, you know, we've picked the sites that we feel are the most realistic and most viable to count towards meeting our RENA numbers.
It strikes me as being that we've identified sites that take care of the majority of the units in one fell swoop or one development, as opposed to looking at densification and infill. And those are elements that I'm not seeing so much of, but they're also things that were included in our general plan, things that were considered pretty widely. And yet, they don't appear here in the housing element, and it's always been curious to me.
Those are bonus.
What's that?
Those are bonus then, right?
Yeah, I think they are bonus. We're kind of kicking the can down the way.
And it's a good point. It may be, you know, at some point, 100 years from now, when we're doing the, you know, 12th cycle housing element, we're down to looking at infill and intensification sites. Obviously, those are tougher to develop for a number of reasons. Sometimes they're smaller, you know, it depends on a willing property owner, or there's, you know, so little, you know, development potential, you know, it doesn't attract necessarily a lot of investments. But, you know, you're right, it should be part of the equation in, as we build out the last remaining, you know, lands in the town, that probably will be where we start to look, I'd imagine.
Well, they seem to be making recommendations to us about how we might incentivize some of those things, so we could be considering incentivization of redevelopment of existing sites that are underutilized.
And ADUs is a good example of intensification.
Sure.
And, you know, I think the town will be looking at incentivizing, you know, meaningfully incentivizing ADU production this year, hopefully.
Height limits, you might want to look at.
Yeah.
Height limits.
Yeah.
Great.
No questions from me.
Any other questions from you?
No.
That was very thorough.
So do we, I guess the next thing for us to do would be to make a motion to recommend this to the council. Is anyone ready to do that at this point?
Chair Miller, I know it's formality, but technically you should invite any public comments.
Oh, yes. Any members of the public that wish to speak to this?
You in the back?
You in the back? Do we have any comments that have come in during this meeting at all?
We have not received any comments that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. So our abbreviated public comment section, I guess, is opened and closed. So I move on to the question that I asked before. Is there anyone that's ready to make a motion, or is there any other discussion points that we need to cover?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommended changes and present to the council.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye. And for anybody who is watching, it may seem like we did this really fast, but like, the schedule shows, we've been doing this for years, and we're familiar with the document, so.
And it is an amendment to something that's already been submitted, so it's...
And when is the Town Council meeting that they will be bringing this?
It'll be on February 7th.
February 7th, okay.
That's a great point, and this has been over a year-long process, as Nicole stated. You had a thorough presentation, I believe, in the summer, July, on this, and really, this presentation focused on the changes to the document. So certainly, for anyone who's listening, the board, the town, the Town Council staff and the consultant, you know, have done our diligence in not only reaching out to the community, but making sure that we're preparing a document that we're confident will be certified by HCD. And I just want to clarify for the record, so the motion to recommend that the Town Council adopt the sixth cycle housing element was made by Board Member Zagorski, seconded by, I was Zagorsk, I'm sorry, seconded by Miller, and the vote was four ayes and no abstentions or nays.
That's correct. Yeah, unanimous. Excellent. Is there anything else we're needing to cover tonight? I don't think so.
Thank you for your work on this, and the staff, and those who served on the committee for how many months, years? Yeah, it's...
Over a year, for sure. It's great to have you here in person with us as well.
I know, I know. Nice to see real people.
All right. With that, I guess I will move that we adjourn.
All second?
Excellent. All in favor?
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I think we just moved to adjourn.